Five fifty P M. I would like to note that the members of Harrisburg City Council participated in an executive session to discuss legal matters prior to the start of tonight's work session. But I would like to officially call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Present.
Mr. Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present. Thank you. We have a number of orders of committee business this evening. I will veer a little bit out of order on our agenda to be mindful of the public works staff. So we're going to begin with the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. I will defer to our Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee Chair, Chair Ross.
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight for our work session. Uh, we have two resolutions here for Parks Recreation and Enrichment. Um, the first resolution is Resolution sixteen of two thousand twenty-four, which is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a landowner guarantee agreement with the Capital Area Green Belt Association and furtherance of design, construction, and re restoration of the Paxstang Parkway Creek and Trail. Is there someone here from the administration to present more on this?
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon.
Uh, so the resolution in front of you is for the Capital Area Green Belt or CAGA to get a signature from the city of Harrisburg um, to request an eighty-three thousand dollar grant in, I guess, twenty twenty-three. Uh, it's a C-two, P-two grant. And as, as far as the grant details go, um, I'm sure our, our grant administrator can, uh, give you any and all pertinent info for that. But in a nutshell, this is basically to allow CAGA to apply for this grant because the city itself is the landowner and the grantees need the landowner to sign off on the grant before they're allowed to request it.
Thank you. Um, is, um, Ms. Wallmer here to speak on what the grant is? I mean, it's not that we don't want money we don't have to use from our city budget, but...
And so we have individuals here, uh, from the, uh, Green Belt Association. They can give you a little more detail on the specific grant if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Councilman. I'm, I'm Doug Hill, and I am the president of the Capital Area Green Belt Association.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening.
Good to see you. And thank you for scheduling the resolution with consideration tonight. Uh, this is one of a long list of grants, uh, that we're applying for or have already received as a part of a major restoration project for the Paxstang Parkway. Uh, it includes, among other things, resurfacing, uh, that whole section of the green belt as well as handling, uh, improvements to both stormwater drainage, uh, to the flow of the creek and, uh, to, uh, some parts of the sewer system that go through that area. Uh, so this is just one piece of it, uh, that relates to, uh, land that the city owns. And as was indicated in the explanation, all this does is, uh, the city, as landowner, gives us permission to apply for the grant and then use the grant to do those improvements. The whole project itself is actually, uh, in the neighborhood of six million dollars, and it's, uh, covered over three phases.
Okay. Okay, 'cause I know Mr. Baker said eighty-three thousand dollars, so...
For this piece, yes.
For this piece, and then there's other grants you'll have to apply for after that? Or once you get approved for this one, they will give you money in, um, certain allocations?
We actually, yes, we actually have several partners. Uh, we were just awarded a one-point-four-million-dollar PennDOT grant, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we are working with the Chesapeake Bay Commission, uh, with CRW, uh, and a number of others. Uh, also with me is Scott Shepler. He's actually been, uh, working a little bit more closely on it, and he might have some fine detail if you really need to get into that, but, uh...
Well, my colleagues may have other questions, but would you like to speak, um, say your name for me again, please, when you...
My name is Scott Shepler.
Okay.
Uh, I believe the eighty-three thousand is part of a larger, um, a larger effort, a larger project. Um, and it's, you know, we have to have to, uh, to receive the D C N R funding, we need this landowner agreement for that part of it.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I think the project, if, um, if, if I'm correct, is about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar total.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna defer to my colleagues to see if they have any, um, further questions. I'll start to my left with, um, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. I don't have any questions at this moment.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions for me. Thank you.
President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Thank you for being here this evening. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, and Councilwoman Daniels.
Yeah, so could you clarify a little bit more for me? So in the landowner agreement, is then CAGA, uh, acting as agent for the city? Or is the city giving CAGA a simple?
So we, we don't acquire any title or any easement for the land, but rather you're simply giving us permission to, uh, undertake the project, manage the project on, uh, to improve it. But, uh, because you're the landowner, we need your approval to do that.
Okay, so it's more like you're basically being an agent for, you have like full ability to be your agent in anything related to that point-eight miles portion? And, and is it restricted to just, um, environmental issues? Or is it, is it broader than that, like the agency role?
So this is a specific requirement of this agency and their grant process. It, it's not sort of a carte blanche to do whatever. It has to be related to the grant application that they're doing. And so it's basically to give them the temporary right to do the work that they're getting, applying to do and show they have the right to be there to do it. You've probably approved, you know, eight of these over the last six years, I think, maybe over, for different people.
I think it's also important to note that the city does have a project manager that oversees, uh, high-level project, you know, specs, uh, with the Green Belt on a regular basis. They meet on a regular basis, and the city is in the loop on different, um, areas of this project as it's continually going on.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get clarity on what the relationship between, is between. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one additional question. It could be just clarification, um, for you, Director Baker. I was wondering, I know you're special projects, and then, uh, Director Ross, she's, um, Director of Parks and Recreation and Enrichment. Um, do you all work together on this? Because I know you used to come in front of me when it dealt with CAGA. And, um, is this considered just a special project? Or is this work together, do you and Director Ross work together on this resolution and Resolution eighteen? Because they seem to be the same. Okay, come to the mic for me, Director Ross.
No, only for the forty-five, um, thousand-dollar grants that they're asking for, so Resolution eighteen.
Okay, but not sixteen. Okay. Is there a particular reason? Do you know a particular reason, Director Baker? Just wondering.
Uh, I just don't think for this particular one, we've ever had the need to collaborate on anything. It's, it's been an ongoing project that, you know, we've overseen and worked on for multiple years now.
Okay. Yeah, I know, but you were working as Parks and Rec, and now I know it's a little split up, and you're special projects, and she's Director of Parks and Recs, but I didn't know how it, why you wouldn't work together, or why you don't. So that's why I was asking. But I, I'm gonna have to ask the administration.
I could, I might be able to lend something to that.
Okay.
I think that the, uh, what we've been working on with, as special projects, if you will, are the, um, capital improvements. And when things involve maintenance, we're well-connected to Ms. Ross for those purposes.
Okay. That explains a little bit better. Thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions either, so, um, I propose that Resolution sixteen of two thousand twenty-four goes on our next legislative, um, agenda, please. And now we'll go to Resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty-four, which is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to award funding in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Capital Area Green Belt Association for the performance of maintenance on city-owned land in the Capital Area Green Belt.
Madam Chair, I just wanna know, the forty thousand should be forty-five. That's what's in the twenty-twenty-four budget. That was just an error in drafting on our side, so we will send a corrected one down to you.
Thank you, and Director Ross did just say that, but then when I'm looking at it in a reading, I'm like, well, hold on. Okay. Thank you. That's noted. Okay, so who will be presenting on this? Okay. See, it's, that's how it gets confusing for me, because it's the same project, in a sense, for two different directors. I hope you all are communicating well.
Hello. I'm Sasha Ross, um, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. These two gentlemen are here to explain why they need the forty-five thousand dollars. Last year, um, they got the same grant money previous years, um, before that.
Yes, thank you. Uh, what this represents is a partnership, a long-term partnership that the city has had with the Green Belt Association. And unlike the prior discussion, this one relates simply to, uh, the annual work that we do to keep the trail in shape, uh, to do cleanup, to do minor repairs, and so on. And, uh, one of the things that you may be interested in, uh, last year, uh, the, the Pennsylvania Environmental Council did a, what's called a peer review of the Green Belt Association and found out that, among other things, we are taking on, uh, significant responsibility that otherwise would fall to the municipality. So essentially, we're relieving the city of a lot of the work that it would otherwise be doing as part of this asset and instead taking it on with, through the association. And so this is, uh, representative of the partnership that we've had with the city for a number of years. And, uh, we use the funds, uh, to, uh, as I said, do basic maintenance. Uh, it helps us, uh, keep our equipment in order, gets, buys the gasoline for our mowers and, and things like that.
Actually, uh, yes, but the, um, this, this particular grant, um, goes back to two thousand nineteen. Uh, was the first time that we were awarded this. And we have, uh, we have two primary purposes for it. It's really to do the work that cannot be done by volunteers. And specifically, those, um, those items are channel maintenance in the restoration areas and along the creek, where the creek intersects with the, with the trail, and, um, for invasive management, invasive control. Uh, it's, and that, it's a herbicide application primarily, and volunteers are not allowed to do that. So that's, that is what the money's used for. It's also supported, um, the, uh, the previous restoration work that we've done and the operation, maintenance, and repair agreements we have with the agencies. Uh, we're obligated to, to perform this work, and the city's obligated to, uh, to, to assist with that. I guess the other part was, uh, as far as, uh, um, invasive control, um, it's, again, part of that maintenance agreement with the agencies.
Thank you for that further explanation. Um, do you all wanna say anything else before I see if my members have any questions, the council? Okay, well, I'll start to the left, I mean, excuse me, the right with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions? I can come back to you. I'll come back around. Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Actually, it was pretty straightforward, um, what the money will be used for, so I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green. You're welcome. Um, President Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for joining us this evening. It's pretty straightforward, in my opinion. I have no questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Jones.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, that's it for me, too. So I am asking that Resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty-four be placed on our next legislative agenda, and that ends the business for Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, today in the Public Works Committee, we'll be discussing Resolution nineteen of two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, can you read Resolution nineteen of two thousand twenty-four into the record?
Resolution nineteen, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, L L P, to provide transportation, planning, and engineering services on an as-needed basis.
Thank you for that. I see our current engineer, Mr. Snow, and the team here. Um, Mr. Snow, whenever you're prepared, you have the floor.
Yeah. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So, um, as stated, the open-end, uh, transportation engineering agreement was advertised to obtain a consultant to support the office of the city engineer. Um, some of the tasks that were included in that advertisement included land surveying, grant support services, traffic studies, specification development, uh, capital project planning, bid package development, ADA compliance consultation, and engineering support services, generalized. Wallace Montgomery scored the highest amongst the three submitting firms um, by the Colts, the consultant selection committee, and is being recommended by the traffic and, and engineering office for approval. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um, gentlemen, did you have anything to add?
Uh, just like to introduce ourselves. Uh, good evening, councilmembers, chairman. Um, my name is Wayne Martin. I'm here on behalf of Wallace Montgomery. Uh, I would be the project manager on, on this contract on behalf of Wallace Montgomery. Uh, I would be the first point of contact, obviously, for the administration. And I'm here, I'm joined by Hip Boo, one of our project engineers.
Hi, my name is Hip Lee. I'm a project engineer. I work as, uh, on the structures department, so I do a lot of bridges. Um, I'm, um, I grew up in Harrisburg, and, uh, I went, went to college, and now I'm back in Harrisburg, so, yeah.
Thank you for that, and just for full transparency, um, Mr. Snow, how was, well, who were the other, uh, I guess, firms that were included?
Yeah, it was Dawood Engineering, and then H R G, and then Wallace Montgomery.
Dawood, that's already under contract with?
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Wayne was previously the engineer here, correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. Royal pleasure to meet you formally.
Yeah, it was nice.
Heard great things about you.
Some familiar faces and some new faces, and, uh, you know, just, just to be fair, I mean, this was like the highlight of my career, being a city engineer, right? So, uh, I'm still doing work for cities across the Commonwealth and into Maryland, uh, looking back on our times, and that, and that's true for a lot of the employees of Wallace Montgomery. Uh, they, we talked about these projects and, and the opportunities that the city had afforded us, um, back then. So we're real excited. We put a lot of effort, obviously, into building the team. Uh, I can get into the details of the team that we pulled together for the city of Harrisburg, and we do look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Um, I guess this would be a solicitor question. Neil, do you foresee any conflicts of interest with this firm?
No.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the, for, just for public edification, a person has to be out of the government for a year before they can appear back before the body. And so Mr. Martin's been gone three, almost three. Yep, so...
Okay, awesome. All right, um, I have no further questions, but I will open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with my immediate left, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. How are you guys doing? Um, just, just for me, clarification. What is the difference between, um, their firm and what SiteLog is gonna do for the city? Neil, can you answer that? What is the difference with their offering and the, um, what, between them and what SiteLog is going to do for the city? I know what they're, um, they're gonna analyze a lot of the things in our assets, and, you know, some engineering things were in, inside of what SiteLog was doing, so what is the difference?
So I think, I, I see them as very different. Um, these, this is pure engineering services with surveys and other things. With it, SiteLogic is doing a capital, uh, assessment to put that together. Uh, and, you know, the, the budget is what it is. It's not a huge budget that they have. What is it? It's like four, four thousand dollars. Is that what it is? And, and it's, I think they said ten cents per square foot. So, that, you're not gonna go real far with that. Um, and, but, you know, they'll get through a lot of significant early stuff. Uh, and so basically, they're putting together a capital asset list so you can do a capital budget in a more concrete way, so that we can know what we own, we know what, and, and have it evaluated and looked at, um, which a lot of cities have moved in that direction with technology, and we're really just getting started. So, um, but, so these are more, from my view, unless I'm missing something from Mr. Snow, this is pure engineering work, not, not, not analysis for capital budget purposes.
Yeah, I mean, because I've seen some of that language reading, um, you know, some engineering services were gonna be provided. And with them being on an as-needed basis, I was just wondering the difference between the two. Um, I just didn't wanna make sure we're not spending money twice for the same thing, so...
Right, and, and, you know, feel free to talk to the finance office and to the engineer office. I think they can both explain the difference of the two, because they really do have two different, uh, objectives.
All right. All right, no more questions for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Um, good evening to you both. Thank you for being here, you two as well, Mr. Snow. Um, my question would be, um, I know Daywood's contract, I suppose, runs, I know it runs out. I remember voting for that. So then, would they, you would take the place, or they would take the place of what Daywood is doing now? Dawood, sorry. Is that, or, or do we have two then on the payroll?
So Dawood is just finishing out the public work storage facility, as well as, um, any state street redesign work. Any additional tasks will be going to the new, um, engineering consultant. So there shouldn't be any overlap, so to speak.
Well, if we vote on it in the next meeting, it would be an overlap, right? Because they're still...
So they're both... Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make, I thought it, okay. They said no.
Please continue though, Mr. Snow, just for anyone that's watching, that's inquiring.
Yeah, I was, I was just saying that there, there would be time overlap, but the, the actual, the task orders would not overlap. There would be different services performed.
Yes, I meant time.
Yeah, okay. Yes, there will be a little bit of overlap with time.
Of time, okay. All right, that was just what I was asking, like, they would ultimately replace them.
Correct. That's the intention, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Just wanted to review the terms. Um, so this, I see, uh, the terms of this agreement is through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, and both parties would have the option to extend at agreed-upon rate. Is there an opportunity to... Sorry, I was looking to determine if there was an opportunity, if, before the two years, if either party determined that this wasn't a good fit, is that option available? Or did I miss that? Okay.
Can't hear you now.
The standard cancellation convenience clause has been added.
For convention, I, I'll see if I can find the page where you might...
Okay. Okay, that was all. I just wanted to note, uh, the time. I always like to note the timelines and terms, uh, for the agreements, but thank you. It's nice to see you, uh, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just have another quick question. It also expounds on you providing grant opportunities or grant information. Is that with the intention to work with our current grant coordinator, uh, Ms. Rebecca? Or will you guys be working independently on grants?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. So there's a lot of transportation grant opportunities, obviously, with the, um, I I J A, the, the federal bill, and there's a lot of, um, cities such as Lancaster who've been awarded, you know...
Can you speak a little closer into the mic, Wayne? Thank you.
A lot of ci, a lot of sister cities, for example, city Lancaster, uh, what, just awarded over fifteen million in, uh, safety streets for all grants. But a lot of these grants are very cumbersome to prepare, uh, require engineering estimates, um, concept plan development, things like that, that, um, the city has, um, you know, struggled, struggled to, to pull together with the city staff. So we would augment, um, city staff in preparing these complex applications, particularly on the federal side, but also on, you know, state grants, uh, green light go grants, uh, multimodal grants, things that require engineering estimates and concept plans to sort of get it, get those across the finish line. We did offer, I know, you know, haven't been in this position previously. Sometimes the grants are very small in nature and require only a few hours of, uh, work. You know, we have sophisticated software that we can use, um, which is probably why our rates are high, right? Because we have to pay for those licenses, um, to prepare these renderings and things. Um, but a lot of times it's, you know, four, five hours of work. So we did put in here forty hours of free services throughout, uh, per year, um, to prepare concepts, uh, for transportation grants, just because I, I knew how difficult it had been when I was here trying to get, you know, contracts executed for four, five, eight hours of work. So there's a lot of opportunities, I think, in the current markets. We look forward to working with the city on, uh, what, what its priorities are and trying to fit, fit grant opportunities to those, to those priorities.
Thank you. Um, Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Um, thank you all for being here tonight. I apologize for my physical tardiness. Uh, it's good to see you again, Wayne. Um, I don't really have any questions regarding this, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you for being here, and welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, one question. So whenever an engineer takes over for another engineer, um, or the changing of guards, so to speak, are all of the current business, is all of the current business, the projects, is that just transferred over? Or are there some things that get dropped? Um, for example, a, a parking study or a study of some sort? It doesn't matter who answers.
I, I mean, I, we, we're gonna be under a task order agreement. Um, so whatever tasks are, are, you know, we'll be asked to prepare a scope of work, um, for, for a given task, or maybe we're given a scope of work and we're asked to prepare a budget for it. So if we're not, if the administration, whether it's, you know, Mr. Snow, or one of, or, you know, whoever's in charge of the contract, doesn't ask us to prepare it, we, we would not take it upon ourselves to, you know, to create the task. We may, uh, give advice if, uh, you know, maybe you received a letter from PennDOT or something saying that this should be done, or maybe constituent sent a request and didn't know what to do with it. We, we could probably give advice on, you know, what, what could be a, a resolution of that and create a task, but we're not gonna just pick up where someone left off, I hope. If it needs to be transitioned, we can help with that, though.
Thank you for explaining how that whole process works. Thank you for explaining how that whole process works. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
Yeah, uh, just for my edification, what's the cap on this contract? Is there a cap to it?
I think, from my understanding, Shemane, I think it would go, um, as a project, per project, correct? Whatever we ask you guys to do and then we'll have a price tag then.
Yeah, each task will have a, a, a sum. And so I guess the cap would be whatever is budgeted from year to year in consulting engineering line item. Um, we, we know, there is a timeline.
So whenever we ask you all to give us, to perform a task, you'll give us an estimate of what that task will cost and then we'll assess how that fits within our budget, I guess.
Right. And, and whether it's partially taxpayer-funded, whether it's grant-funded, depends on the specific project. Um, but obviously professional services are an important part, usually at the beginning of each project to get, to get everything together. So it'll be driven by the budget, you know, that, that's made available for that particular task.
Okay. And, and the termination is on page seven. It's 30 days notice. But that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, before I move to add this to our legislative session, does any of my other colleagues have any other, anything to add to this before we move forward? All right, hearing none, I move to add Resolution 19 of 2024 to our next legislative session. And that concludes the work of the Public Works Committee. Back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. We will now move to the beginning of our agenda, to the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, for the Budget and Finance Committee, we will be discussing Resolution 17 of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, would you read into the record, please?
Resolution 17, 2024, a resolution approving the second proposed 2024 budget reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designate as revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specified projects.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the administration to present on Resolution 17 of 2024? Good evening, Director Hill and Director Baker. Please feel free to start your presentation when you're ready.
Good evening. Denise Hill, Director of Department of Building and Housing Development. Um, you all should have a packet in front of you, but it will follow along on the screen here. So of the proposed, proposed funds, um, there are several pots coming out of, uh, DBHD, first of which is $8 million for affordable housing. Um, that would be the total allocation for out of the ARPA funds, um, proposing up to $2 million per project. So that would be four projects in total. Um, it's intended to provide gap funding to assist major housing development projects come to fruition. Uh, this is an incentive to developers as a subsidy, so it would keep the units truly affordable. Next, we have $5 million in our homeowner occupied rehabilitation program. Um, as you will see, this one is to provide upgrades to homes, to homeowners in the city. Um, we have a lot of older housing stock. We also have neighbors on a fix or a tight income. They are unable to make major, uh, but very necessary repairs and upgrades to their homes. Uh, this program will help keep families safe without being a cost burden to them. Um, you all are familiar with our housing rehabilitation program out of HRP. HRP, we often have to choose one or the other. So we have a cap of up to $18,000. So a lot of times we have to choose either the roof or the HVAC. By providing, uh, $30,000 deferred forgivable grants to homeowners in the city, this would be able to, um, address houses who are in, uh, they're in poor condition. But oftentimes our, our homeowners don't have the, the capacity to keep the bills up and also make the repairs to their homes. Next, we have $2 million for the delinquent trash and refuse bills. Um, I just wanted to add here, you'll see the information on it, but what is not used would be returned and, uh, to be reallocated to other ARPA programs with a higher or an unmet need. Um, when this program was first reviewed, there was well over a million dollars in outstanding bills. So the original allocation was increased. Next, we have a million dollars going towards, uh, bridge housing. Uh, this allocation would help ease the strain on emergency shelters. Um, it would move residents to a housing solution without just moving them out of emergency shelter and then run the risk of being housing insecure or, um, unsheltered. Um, therefore, it helps our unsheltered neighbors have access to the needed emergency shelter beds and services. We are routinely meeting with stakeholders at all levels to develop an actual infirm plan for our current encampments. Those stakeholders include the county, the governor's office, and service providers. Oh, lastly, we have, uh, $250,000 allocated for senior programs. So these would be for, uh, service providers who primarily serve our senior citizens in the community to make sure that, uh, both the services as well as the facilities would be able to be upgraded, making sure that things are ADA compliant, making sure that they are safe and that the access to the services that our, uh, senior residents need. The next couple of slides you will see are a budget overview. You also have a second part to your packet which shows that, um, in a separate packet, so everything is kind of pulled out. But it just kind of goes over and it breaks down each of the programs. So I have general administration here just to cover for salaries. Um, and this is for a two-year timeframe, so there are currently two program managers, but it also includes, uh, benefits for them over a two-year period. At the bottom, you will see the home repairs program. We have the 5 million allocated, again, that's over two years. So at $30,000 per deferred forgivable loan, we will be able to assist 30 households in the city. And this, these programs do not take away from the ones that are currently in place. Next, we have the delinquent trash and refuse bill. At $5,000, delinquent, that would be the, the max. We will be able to assist, uh, a thousand pass due bills. Then we have the affordable housing, as I discussed earlier, up to $2 million for each program. We have bridge housing, uh, proposed $50,000, up to $50,000 grants to housing providers. That would make room for 20 awards. And then our senior programming, also up to $50,000 grants to senior services. So that would be five awards.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess we can pause here and ask you questions and then we'll move to Director Baker to, uh, discuss his portion. Um, I have a couple of questions for you and then I'll open it up to my colleagues and come back to myself. Um, so starting with the affordable housing program, you said, uh, looking at four projects up to $2 million. What's the application process? How will these projects be chosen?
So according to the resolution, all of implement, implementation of these programs would be by committee. So a chairperson, so Councilwoman Davis would be on that committee, um, to actually roll out what the criteria would be. And then council members would be, uh, in, invited to also participate. Um, but essentially, the, there is an application that would be drafted and then come back to this body for determination.
All right. And then what's your timeline that you're looking at, um, for, I guess, the implementation of this?
Um, I have two program managers in place right now. So I'd be able to start scheduling committee meetings Monday.
All right. Um, I'm going to move on to the next part, which was the, helping Harrisburg residents in need, the $5 million up to $30,000 in assistance. It says that it is a deferred forgivable loan. Could you explain that a little bit?
Certainly. So what happens is, uh, we will put a five-year lien on the property. So it, basically it uses a, a schedule that amortizes over time. So over, if the homeowner stays in the home for the duration of the five years, amount of money comes off each year. So at the end of that, then they can just do, we do what's called a satisfaction piece. Um, and then for $78.75, the lien can be lifted. So it is put in place just so that the $30,000 is not put in and the equity is paid for by the city. And then the homeowner turns around and sells the house and, and draws the equity from the work that was done from the city. It is the intention to make the home safe and livable, but also, um, make sure that they were stabilizing the community and, and helping our families stay.
Okay, thank you. I like that. Um, it sounds like Neil will have some work to do, uh, to make sure enforcement is, is kept with that. But, um, I like the fact that we, we are putting that lien in place so that the money isn't just being put out and then housed and sold right away. So I appreciate the thought process and that. Uh, and then the senior programs, um, as far as the, the organizations that will be targeted, it's, that's just like a public application process that'll be developed and then the committee will help to, to choose the recipients?
That's correct.
All right. And then as far as bridge housing, same process. And so none, all of this is still kind of in the development phase. We're not, we haven't already like identified organizations, because of course that's the, the, the talk that goes around that the money's already allocated, they know who it's going to. So I just want to make it clear to the public, um, that this is still in the beginning stage. The committees are still waiting to be formed technically. Um, and then the, the process will start and decisions will be made from that point.
That is correct. Um, so policies, applications, everything will be available for review. Um, can come back to this body before they are rolled out. Nothing has been rolled out, I will state, um, just for the record. A lot of times with any of these programs, there are organizations that come to top of mind. So we know that this is what they do. Uh, but none of this is, um, established in a way that it is automatically given to any one project or, um, developer or anything. Um, it would all have to go through, uh, an application and review process.
All right. Um, and then just as far as the education piece. So this might draw a lot of new applicants that have never applied for some of the federal money that we've allocated before. Uh, will there be an education process to ensure that new organizations have the opportunity to participate, learn, and, uh, possibly get some funding?
Uh, absolutely. Throughout the presentation that was just shown, um, is, a lot of times it said existing organizations. So that is an attempt to make sure that, um, folks aren't mission drifting. So because money is available, I'll start a nonprofit that does this to get the money. So making sure that this is work that is being done. But however, um, we don't want to isolate or alienate an or, an organization because they are newer. If they are existing and they are in this lane and doing this work, we want to be able to assist them to access the money to positively impact the city.
Okay. And then just last question, um, from I am before I open up for my colleagues. Uh, is it a reason why the committees and things haven't been formed before the money needs to be moved into the, the next pot? So how come this hasn't been done beforehand and then we can move the money once we've got the applications and things?
Sure. To my knowledge, that was a newer part that was not in Bill 5, but in Resolution 17. So, um, I have been in talks, applications have come before this body, but that was like back in December of 2022. So the actual forming of the Committee for Implementation was new as a part of this resolution.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'm going to start to my far left with Councilman Jones. Any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, uh, Vice President Green. How are you, Ms. Hill?
Well, how are you?
Good. Um, my question is around the, the $8 million for, uh, the, the affordable housing program. And again, we're still in the development stages with this, correct? So I just need some clarity from me. Um, when I heard you say some of this is gap money will be used, excuse me, for gap money for, um, developers that are already coming into the city and building what they deem to be affordable housing, correct?
Correct.
So for me, and a lot of that, of those developers, they come in and use tax credit, right? So for me, I'm just trying to figure out how we can bring money into the city, because a lot of these developers use the tax credits. And then we, we have some federal money right now that we can use. I know we want to, we need housing, I understand it. But I think we can do something better with this and then helping other people come in and, uh, what, it's made last, what, 10 years before we can even draw taxes on these properties that they're building?
So that's what the LERTA is, the 10 years. And then the tax credits typically run anywhere between 15 and 30. They stack them. So it's two 15-year, um, so it ends up being 30 years.
Goodness. Uh, yeah, okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, will any of these dollars be allocated to current projects that are awaiting funding from the city? Um, like the project out the south, the Sycamore Homes, et cetera?
Should they apply?
Okay, uh, because I think currently, aren't they still waiting for like CDBG or some type of funding?
So CDBG, public facilities?
Or any specific funding, the project, because that's 100% affordable housing.
Correct.
And there seems to be a holdup. Uh, would that money be allocated or do they have to apply separately?
They will have to apply, yes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
And, uh, Councilman Jones, real quick before you, I'm sorry, just to, just to clarify my statement about the taxes. LERTA, it, it is never zero taxes. So it's not where, um, a, a property owner is not paying taxes for a time period of 10 years. It's actually graduated and they continue to pay on what the assessed value is at the beginning. And then it balloons, if you will, to the assessed value after the project is done after 10 years. So I just wanted to clarify that it is not zero.
Right. But, but you, you understand what I'm saying, though.
Absolutely. I just felt like that, that, the comment and the way I answered it could have been a, a little misunderstood. So I just wanted to clarify that it's no, not no taxes, sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Vice President Green, and, um, thank you for being here tonight, Director Hill. Um, most of my questions were answered. They were the same as Vice President Green's. And then you re-answered it again when you said that we would get the information, any applications or, um, any paperwork would come in front of us first. So that was, um, my concern. I wanted to make sure we saw the applications that would be going out, um, to residents or, um, developers as well.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. President Bowers?
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to clarify some of the potential outcomes and totals that you noted. Um, so for the home repairs, the estimate was 165 homes. Is that correct?
The estimate for home repairs?
Yes.
Oh, I might have two different versions. So the one on the screen may be different than the one you have in your packet. I changed it multiple times today, sorry.
Okay, so which one is the correct?
It is the 165, 165 homes, yes.
And then this says 400 pass due bills for the delinquent refuse, but I thought you mentioned 1,000?
Yes, so that was the other. So, and initially I had different numbers. So I was calculating based on what the total number was. And then when I did the final one, this is the updated one. So, um, and I'm, I'm happy to make any corrections in the, if we were to upload the PowerPoint. But this is the corrected number. It would be 400.
It would be 400, okay. And then with this particular appropriation, um, you mentioned that if it's not used, that, that we, did we overestimate in the beginning? Could you clarify that point that you made?
Sure. So the delinquent bills, when we looked at the amount that is passed due for the timeframe starting March of 2022, it is well over a million. So the initial allocation way back like Bill 5, um, when appropriations were kind of sent down at the rough draft of allocations, it was it was only a million, but even at that time, the amount was well over a million. So it was adjusted to show two million to be able to to help folks.
To accommodate the four hundred?
The actual number of of what's needed.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. Uh, we talked about the affordable housing. The bridge program or bridge housing is twenty. The estimate was twenty awards?
Yes.
Okay, and then senior programming up to five?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't think I have any other questions, I just wanted to clarify those uh potential.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Green. My questions have been answered also, so I don't have any at this time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Daniels?
Same here, no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that's all the questions for you at this moment. I'm going to uh pass it to Director Baker to go over his portion of this resolution.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, before you, you have a presentation for the Hall Manor Swimming Pool. Um, I believe this is for a two-million-dollar allocation uh towards that project. We have a PowerPoint slideshow here of the deficiencies throughout the property out at Hall Manor. As you can see, the pool was built in nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, it had, it has far seen or far surpassed its lifespan. We'll just go through some of these pictures and then I can uh give you some of the pricing options as far as the um, you know, different construction processes go. All right, so as you can see, we have um, you know, the pool shell and the surrounding deck is starting to separate. Um, the um caulking of the shell is completely gone in a lot of places, and we lose a lot of water throughout the year uh at the pool. Um, this pool, we first had to shut down in twenty twenty, that's right when COVID started, and it has not been steadily up and running really since then. Um, we have a number of deficiencies that don't allow us to utilize the pool at this point in time. Uh, you can see, this is the um, the non-ADA compliant ramp into the pool. Again, you can see the side walls and then the drainage up on the the um upper deck portion of the pool itself. Uh, here shows you some of the framework for the roofing and then uh some shots of the bathroom sinks. You can see the roofing itself is starting to rot in places, and we have a lot of deficient areas in the the roof. The entire thing needs replaced, but there are some really bad areas. Uh, this is the locker room. Obviously, the the concrete floor spouting and chipping in areas, uh, the epoxy is completely gone. And then uh here are some pictures of the shower area uh during the winterization process. Uh, here are more shell pictures of the pool itself, and then you can see on the diving board wall, the actual wall has started bowing in, uh, which is a rather large structural issue that we'll be facing. Uh, this is the pump house and chemical filtration room on the right and in the middle. And then again, some roof shots uh from the actual, the framing side from under the roof itself. Uh, the chemical uh dispenser is completely shot. Uh, we have pumps that uh have winding issues, motor starters with issues, flow switch or lack of flow switches. Uh, you name it, there's, there's a lot of issues out here with this particular room. The options we have as far as uh for the two-million-dollar allocation would be to uh do a renovation or remodel of existing to get these deficiencies back to where they need to be just at the absolute bare minimum. We're looking at about two-point-one million dollars uh to do a remodel and replacement of the existing pool structure and facilities out there for the same exact things what we have, but more up-to-date. Uh, would be four-point-six-five million dollars. And then option C, to actually put a spray park in, as you can see here, would be eight million dollars. Uh, these next slides are fictitious renderings of possibilities that the city could uh absolutely do out in that area. These are not specific pictures of what we plan on putting in, but these are all uh different possibilities. If we go with a uh spray park of some sort on aquatic facility, to get to that two-million-dollar point, we'd be looking at doing the consulting side of things, the demolition work, and then the initial earthwork and a lot of foundational uh or foundational work uh as well. So, in case you had questions about how far two million would get us in this process. This would be the uh conclusion of the slideshow.
All right, thank you. Um, I guess as we're talking about the pools, um, it's it's a facility, so that's why, why you're discussing it, correct? Because it's considered a city facility?
Yes.
Not parks and rec, but a facility. Um, so I guess for me, can you give me an idea of your plan as far as how this project would move forward?
Uh, as long as the the money's reallocated, I think we start moving forward with the um RFP for a consulting firm to do the design and then the engineering side of things. We get the environmental studies that take, you know, sometimes up to a year to do. Um, and then we, you know, start the process of of deciding what we'll actually be implementing in this aquatic facility itself. Uh, we've done uh multi-year um studies with the public to see what that they they've been asking for and what they want to see out in the area. Um, and then we start implementing some of those things into the design. Um, once that's done, we start doing demo work, site prep, and we do the earthwork. And at that point, we would start uh running out of the funding for this process.
Okay, um, just to make it clear, you said we would start running out of funding before the end of the project?
Yeah, so the, it's an eight-million-dollar project. Uh, so if we allocate two million dollars for it, that's where we would get to. That's the point we would be uh at the project itself, if we were to go for the spray park.
Would take us to about the demo phase?
Yeah, the demo phase would be complete, we'd actually probably be starting the earthwork. So they'd be doing site prep, earthwork, and then like the mechanicals underground, all the different uh plumbing systems and the the um foundation work.
Okay, and about how long would you estimate that'd be? A year out, two years out, before we hit that point?
No, that that shouldn't take a terribly long period of time. Doing the um, the consulting side of things would take a bit, but once the consulting side is all taken care of and the environmental studies have been completed, um, then the demo work itself is fairly quick. So that's, you know, it could be, and it depends on how fast our internals work. But if our internals are are working uh fast, you know, it could be a a six-month to nine-month um duration from start to finish of that.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have at this time. I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues, starting with my far right, with uh Councilwoman Daniels.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, uh, Vice President Green. No, no questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I had accurate notes regarding, okay, so you noted a remodel of the existing pool at two-point-one million dollars, was that correct?
That's correct, and that's not to do a complete remodel, that's for the absolute bare minimum deficiencies to be corrected.
Right, and then you mentioned a remodel and replacement, is that of the existing pool as well?
Yes, so that would be to take the existing uh, you know, nineteen-sixties design and then just tear it down and rebuild the same thing in its place.
And what was that total?
That total is four-point-five million, or four, I'm sorry, so it's four million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And just as a note, these are all budgetary numbers. Obviously, until we get a consultant and contract, you know, we won't get the exact construction numbers. But these are as close as we could get from our previous consultants.
Okay, and then the spray park total was eight million?
Correct.
Now, I'm just curious, I'm not, maybe you can refresh my memory, but I'm not sure why the spray park is still on the table. I thought that we were clear that we were looking for a pool.
So the spray park or aquatic facility would have a pool feature incorporated in it?
Again, with the timeline that you just reviewed with Vice President Green, um, you noted the earthwork, demolition, all of those things. Um, so then how do you land on what option you move forward with from there?
So I believe that the the option that we're assuming we we would move forward with, and I say that because, you know, we don't make, I don't make these choices uh how we move forward in this manner, but if the full eight million is allocated for this project, that then we start moving forward with the full aquatic facility as far as, you know, project goes.
Thanks for clarifying, but again, it was my understanding that a spray park was off the table. So our, in my recollection, the two options would be either remodel the existing pool at two-point-one million or remodel and replace completely at four million, six hundred, fifty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you for being here again, um, Director Baker. Um, I guess my question comes back around with uh the confusion of who is in charge of what because I understand a pool would be a special project, I do get that. But um, I spoke on the phone, and I would go back in my email, tell you the exact date, but my email deletes all my emails at a certain point. But I spoke on the phone with and had a meeting with Director Ross and um Mr. Saunders about the pool. So I and it was about not a spray park. It was about either, actually was about um redoing the the pool and upgrading it for the four-point-six million dollars. Or just having the eight million and they had a a plan that they were gonna come in front of council with. So I'm confused on now who is the point port person, cuz I think that's important. Is it you? Is it Director Ross? Have you spoke to her about this pool, about the pool updates? Or was it just given to you? I I just don't know who to exactly ask questions to.
So if I may weigh in.
Please.
This version of the resolution came about from a meeting the mayor called, uh, I guess a week or two ago um with Denise Hill's team, my team, uh where she wanted to see the ARPA money going out the door. And she sat there and made decisions right there about how much to send into this budget for each of these things. So these were the mayor's decisions, and she had directed us to reach out to Mr. Baker on this. Uh, that was a direction I got from her, and I'm the one who reached out to Mr. Baker because the mayor directed me to reach out to Mr. Baker on this, and so.
Thank you.
And so, uh, you know, whether they've had subsequent discussions, I don't know that. But she want, her her main issue was she wanted to do something, that swimming's gotta be available for children.
Right, no spray park, right, we already agreed on it, we don't want a spray park.
Right, what I'm saying, but she meant in the near term, that's why this was more repair and maintenance money. The thought that a new pool is available for the numbers you're talking about seems like an imaginary thing to me because the numbers they spent in other cities are just millions and millions and millions. They had to issue a bond to replace the pool in Chambersburg, that was like fourteen million dollars, that was ten years ago.
So then why are we saying eight million for a spray park? Or was we, or just because that's what?
I think the spray park was cheaper than a pool. The council made it very clear at the, uh, on hearing the bill last summer, they wanted a pool. Eight million dollars isn't gonna get you a pool, we still can't borrow any money, right?
Right, I understand, and this is not towards you, Neil, cuz you're giving me the information that I didn't have because that I I had no idea you were told to call Director Baker, cuz I did speak to Director Ross and Mr. Saunders about what that pool looked like. Um, but then my other thing is if you you just said the mayor would like swimming still in the city, if we get a spray park, they're not swimming, and they're not gonna learn how.
Talking about this, this money right now was about doing maintenance right now, so there'd be repairs in the short term, that's what she was saying.
And then later on, get a spray park?
I I don't know.
Oh, cuz why, I don't know why that spray park was back up there again, I think that's confusion too, but, okay. Um, I just think a a few things need to be clarified, especially with this eight million dollars in the pool because now feels like we're back at square one, it's very confusing. Thank you for answering that question for Director Baker, so I understood how he got to the point person. I know why he was initially the point person before there was a reorganization, but I didn't know why he was back up here again when I had spoken to Director Ross, so that was confusion for me.
It's understandable.
Yeah, okay, um, I mean, that's it for me for now, I have a lot of questions, but I think I need some things clarified um before I can move on. Um, but um, I guess the other part would be either Director Baker or Director Ross, however that ends up working out. When you decide to get the contracts or create the application for those, are you also having those come down in front of us so we're able to see what your application process will look like? Is that allowed? And we're not voting, I'm not looking at, but just wanting to see what his application process will look like, what he's asking for in his application? Yes.
I was out of the room, so I didn't hear whatever you were discussing, I was. Oh, so that a professional licensing, professional services agreement come to City Council?
Yeah.
It's not a bid process, where bids don't come because it's already been vetted. But we, but the money would, any, any professional licensed design, engineering, all that would come to the City Council.
Okay, that's it for me for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too have a slight bit of confusion when we mentioned the water parks. Um, I know council was pretty adamant on voting against it just because of the three-part series that we had when we had town halls to get residents uh input on it. Um, so bear with me, I'll just briefly read a paragraph from that time. The city of Harrisburg was awarded forty-seven million, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in federal funds in two thousand and twenty-one as a result of President Biden's American Rescue Plan. Following five public meetings held in February and March of twenty twenty-two, Mayor Williams proposed spending forty-two-point-four-six million on those funds in May of twenty-two. In June of twenty-two, City Council approved fifteen-point-nine million of those funds designed for public safety projects and filling revenue loss as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. City Council then held three additional public meetings in April of twenty twenty-three before voting on its proposed changes in June of twenty-seven. Council made two changes to Mayor Williams' initial plan. The first was to eliminate a proposal to replace the public pool in South Harrisburg with a water park. Council instead chose to spend the eight million to replace the pool with a newer pool, which could have splash pad elements, depending on the design. So I think that's where the confusion can be.
That's what we're talking about here.
Yep, uh, in my mind, I I could be wrong, um, is that where the confusion kinda lies? So it's pretty much like how could it be brought back up when council has voted it down? That was a question, Dave.
Yeah, didn't you, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but didn't you just say that council was okay with the pools, long as, you know, with spray park elements in it?
Splash pad, like pad, it's not spray park.
Sure, so it's a reduced amount of, you know, aquatic equipment, and it's just a, a, you know, multiple pools or a pool?
Cuz I remember what you were saying at the time, I've, I I remember very distinctively, you wanted to reuse these items part to part, which wasn't sanitary at the time we spoke about, cuz you were saying how they could be used in different parks, the the spray park elements.
To to save as much taxpayer dollars and get as much stretch out of the money we're putting in there, yeah, we were talking about just being able to uh expand the experience for the kids as far as moving them.
And coming out the pandemic, we discussed how that may not be the most sanitary way to go about it and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, everything is chlorinated, everything is killed, it's a hundred percent clean, no matter where it goes. Um, it's, you know, it's recycled and filtered uh water in in these larger setups here. So it 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 would be, it'd be totally sanitary to move pieces from place to place. But, you know, to your point, as far as the the spray park as a whole by itself, um, that that's not, that's not what we're proposing to do, we absolutely, absolutely do want to have the pool element in the spray park.
I think that's the, that's where the confusion is. I think that's the, that's where the confusion is, not the pool in the spray park, a little bit of the spray park in the pool area.
Right, and that that's absolutely something that in the design process, I believe the council should have input in. And it's, you know, right now.
We actually voted it down, though.
To have a straight spray park.
No, to have a pool. This already came in front of us.
To have a pool.
Yeah, we voted to have the pool.
Right, right, right. And we definitely keep that element in in the whole design.
But you're being tricky with words. You do understand that. You're alluding to it being more of a spray park with a pool element as opposed to just a pool or redoing the pool with elements of a spray park or spray pad.
What I'm saying is we are still in the very beginning stages of the concepts. We don't have any specific design saying we're absolutely going this route at this point in time. Uh, we we have studies that we've done for long periods of time and that's where we're basing all of our, our.
100% understand that just for the sake of time, because there are residents here that would like to speak, um, and residents watching, that would still be going against council's decision, would it not?
I I mean, what I'm seeing here is a good compromise.
Director Baker, do you hear yourself right now?
I do.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Councilman Jones, do you have any, any questions or comments?
I do. Thank you, Vice President Green. For me, I, uh, of course, you know, I'm just getting here, but I was able to participate in those, uh, public, um, sessions and and what the community wanted, um, to do with some of this money, especially this pool. But just to make it simple for me, as, um, Solicitor Grover just said, we can't borrow any money, so we should be very careful where we're spending our money. We definitely want to make sure that our children have a place to swim. So for me, I'm more, it, where council president is, um, fix the pool for the 4.6 and, right? That's the number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, if you were to go with this eight million, tell me, I, that's still a lot of money for a pool and I know it's very costly considering, uh, what Mr. Grover said, but what would be the expense for the upkeep when you spend that kind of money for that pool? Do you do those numbers?
For the pool compared to something with spray elements in it?
Yeah, the eight million that you, that you, the the beautiful thing that you put.
Right, so believe it or not, like I was saying before, it's chlorinated water that's recycled. So the water usage is a quarter of what we would use in a pool. The evaporation amount for something with that amount of volume in it is substantial in the summertime with the sun beating down, the kids in and out of it. It's, it's not meant to be recycled water. We continuously pump water in our current pool. We pump thousands and thousands of gallons into it because of the amount of leaks we have throughout the infrastructure of all the piping in that pool.
Got you. So now, if you fix this pool at the 4.6, right? Without the leakage, what would be the cost to maintain the pool as it sits today?
It would be slightly more than what it would be if we reduced the size of the pool and put spray park elements in the structure itself. I don't know the exact numbers because obviously it totally depends on the design itself, but the spray parks, uh, predominantly have less of a cost of upkeep than a pool would as far as water consumption goes.
And I, and I get, I get what you're saying too, and I can under, that's very understandable. But like you, I would like to save us money, uh, moving forward with with the maintenance and everything. But, uh, if you look at the, again, if you look at this pool, spending the 4.6, I would just like to see the numbers in comparison because you, obviously you haven't got, these are, these aren't actual numbers that you have here yet because you haven't really, you're just based off of what you have for your previous engineer or something like that, you said?
Correct, yes. From the the, um, previous studies that they've done, we utilized those and then we added the, uh, construction inflation, uh, percentages to them to get the numbers we have in front of us.
So how long would it take for us to be able to get those numbers before this is even comes up for vote or anything like that?
I can send you the, uh, the math and the numbers that we currently have. It has more of a breakdown to it and that should hopefully give you guys clarity on the different options that we have down here.
I'm talking about exact numbers.
So to get an exact construction number, we would have to have someone under contract to be able to go out to all the different contractors and and use their.
Understandable. All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Um, I would just say kind of listening to the conversation as well as information presented, it doesn't seem like this is exactly ready to move forward. So, and totally allocated eight million dollars to quote unquote, replace the South Harrisburg pool. That's exactly how it's listed. Um, this resolution calls for $2 million for pool maintenance and repair. So to me, that sounds like putting $2 million into the existing pool to repair it, tape it together so that we can use it this year and then we'll be 2 million down from the eight million we have. And now next year, we'd be looking at 6 million instead of 8 million to try and start the project. So that's just looking at, at this resolution here. Listening to your conversation and kind of your plan moving forward with the pool, it doesn't exactly sound like it's on the same par as pool maintenance and repair. It sounds like it's moving towards RFP, design demolition, and if that's what the two million is being used for, then that's moving us towards the direction of either repairing and remodeling, renovating, or removing and replacing the pool. So it sounds like maybe the administration itself might not be exactly on the same page with what this two million is to be used for. So I would say maybe, um, that's an internal discussion that needs to be had before this portion of this resolution moves forward so that we know for sure what the money's being used for. Uh, because there's a big difference whether we're repairing the pool so that it can be used for swimming this year or whether we're using the 2 million to move forward with a a long-term plan for the pool. Uh, because although I'd love to see the kids being able to use this pool this year, um, I feel like $2 million to tape it back together and be in the same place next year is kind of a waste of money. And I don't think that one-time ARPA funds should be used for, you know, tossing out there so that we can splash around this year and, um, not have something that the residents can use for, uh, many years to come. So that's just kind of my, my part on this. So, um, if if this resolution does move forward, I would, I would be looking to amend it to remove this part um, and so we can have a, a in-depth conversation with the administration so we know our actual plan forward so that we're not just putting the money out there and kind of winging it, um, as as where we may have in the past. So that's kind of my part on this. Does anyone else have any questions or comments regarding, uh, the pool? Thank you. Um, before we move on, I will just note, is there anyone here from the administration to discuss, excuse me, tree removal and pruning program that's in here for $500,000 or the demolition of the blighted property for $1.5 million? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Anne Montgomery, Harrisburg Code.
I'm sorry, can you please move the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Anne Montgomery, Code Administrator, here to speak on the, um, ARPA money, one and a half million for the demolition. I don't have an exact number of the amount of buildings that we would take down, but if bidding out, it usually costs an average of $80,000. And for in-house demo, if we were to do it, it would cost half that amount, 40,000. We will try to target buildings that are double, which makes, uh, more efficient to take down two or three at the same time.
All right, so one and a half million, um, looking to demolish blighted properties in the city. Got to give me a little bit more of a plan. Are we looking to go by the, the ranking listed? I know you've presented before, um, at our budget hearings as far as like the different level of properties. Are we looking to to focus on, gi- give me a little more, how are we going to choose? Are we just going to walk down the street and say, I like this one? I don't like this one?
No, we take the worst ones, the ones that are already collapsing. Those are the ones that, the only ones I ever take down. They're either partial collapsing or they've collapsed on the inside. So I take down the worst ones. Those are considered the number ones. It's rated between one and five, one being the worst. So those are the ones I would target, the ones that are already collapsing, that people have walked away, nothing's happening to them.
Okay, and, um, about how many is on the list of number ones?
I believe we have 80 of those.
And as far as the, the legal processes for, is being able to demolish these houses, is it a long process? Is it something that we've already started with some of the houses? Are we looking at, this is going to be six months, a year, two years? How long are we looking at before we're actually able to demolish these houses and, yeah, let's just start there.
Sure. So the process is that once we find a property that is, uh, in a bad shape condemned, we send out a notice to the owner. We give them a certain amount of time, which is 30 days to respond and to start that process of repairing that building. Once they take out, uh, permits, if they do, then that would, uh, extend it to another six months for us to come in and do inspections, progressive inspections. If nothing happens with the new owner, like giving them the 30 days to respond, then we can get a declaration of site emergency from the mayor and then we can go and, um, take that building down.
Okay. Uh, and then as far as timeline, are we looking to expend the entire 1.5 million dollars this year demolishing the blighted properties? And do we have the manpower or are we looking to contract and we'll step it out?
It, it's a two-year budget in, in the item.
Okay, I guess it is 24, 25. I was thinking 24 to 25.
No, but that was, that was, the, the, the place you see the distinction in the budget is the first item for administrations only for 24. The one for, uh, everything else is over two years.
Okay, so then over these two years, we're planning to expend the entire 1.5 million?
Yes.
All right, and, um, how much are we looking to do in-house or will that be determined based on the properties?
It'll determine on, based on the properties.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Stay West, Director of Public Works. Another part of this plan that I placed in the mayor's hands was to purchase, uh, another piece of equipment for the in-house demolition department, which would carry us further into the plan instead of this, uh, trying to get as many contracted outs as we can. It would cost us double the money that if we can do a process in-house to where we can get more of a bang for our buck to perch, to, uh, demo more properties with in-house with this equipment that we have and overlapping each other. For example, if we purchase another excavator, while you have an excavator tearing down a property, you have another excavator that's loading trucks to, that from this property that's already demolished. And as you demo that property with the excavator that you have going on there, when you send the team over to the one that's demolished, you send another one over to prepare to start tearing down the other property as we go forth, so forth and so on. And and this way, in this manner, we can continue to tear down more properties within our city than we have without sourcing, which can cost us 80 or more thousand dollars per property.
Thank you very much for that information. Just one last question for me, um, for Director Montgomery, when it's, comes to the planning of the demolitions, have we been, are we looking to plan the demolition so that if we, so say it's a one, right? One that's ranked the number one, that's next to one that's ranked the number three. Are we looking to be able to couple that together and do the one and three at the same time rather than just doing the one and stabilizing the three until we have to knock it down two years later? Are we looking to like plan forward so that we're, we're being as efficient as possible?
Yes, so right now I have the in-house demo crew. It's a unique that we work together the way we do because the demo crew is under Public Works, but we, as a codes department, pick out the properties and prepare them to make sure the utilities are off and so on. But right now, we have the demo crew on Crescent Street who took down one property already, 339, and he's moving right behind there to Nectarine. He's at now 342 Nectarine and he's going to take down two other ones on Crescent Street. So we're trying to keep them close by.
Okay.
And he already took down two properties. They were connected on Thompson Street, 1,200 block of Thompson.
Okay, um, I think that kind of answers my, my question. I guess I just want to make sure that, um, when we have those connected properties that are both blighted and we have the opportunity to demolish them both at the same time if possible, uh, that we're taking that opportunity rather than doing one and then coming back and doing the other one. Because it seems like it's a process to stabilize the one while you demolish the other one and, um, it just seems like a, a wasted resources if you have to stabilize it to come back and take it down.
Yeah, I'm looking at what's around in that area, in that block, yes.
All right.
Yes.
So the city does have an obligation, if it's taking out a house that has another building that's going to stay, that's connected and stand, we're required to then, there's two options to re-site it. And that's, when you get one that's in the middle of two, it it's twice as much.
Right.
So even when we do our own demo, there are times we still have to hire a contractor to do that part of the work because we don't do the siding in-house. That's not something we do.
Okay.
Yeah, because what was a party wall, like Neil was saying, is now.
Exterior wall, right.
So we have to, uh, insulate that and bring that wall back now.
Right, right. I just want to make sure we're not instillate, uh, uh, insulating and, um, and creating exterior walls for, that we're going to tear down a couple of months later. So that's, that's kind of just making sure that, that we're, we're doing our due diligence so that we're, we're doing it, we're being as efficient as possible. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'm going to start with my far left, with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Um, really don't have any questions. You pretty much filled up the, the suggestion box. No, but, um, I do, uh, it's great to hear that, um, if we can do this in-house, it would save us a bunch of money by switching to GEICO. But that, I mean, I really think that is a good, a, a good thing. So just tell me, how do you get to some of these properties that, that deem that they are not structurally sound? Is there, is, what is the process for that, for you to be able to determine that, that? Is it because someone called you or how do you determine it?
Yeah, sometimes it's through the fire department, the police department. You know, they get a call because the next-door neighbor just hears the, the, the floors give way or the walls give way. It's through our code officers who are out there doing rental inspections or other inspections that they see the collapse and then report it back to the office. But those are the only ones I'm taking down, are the ones that are already half collapsed.
Right. Now, okay, so how, how is that communication with the, with that property owner? Are, are you able to reach, are you able to reach them? Is there any response? And if they don't respond, is it by default you get to do that?
Well, it is a notice that they are sent and they're given 30 days on that notice to respond to us.
Okay.
So if they don't respond, then yes, we can move forward. But usually it's years on the list by the time we get to it. It's not like one collapses and a month later we're taking it down.
I got you. So in, in that interim, is, is the, is, if the property owner decides to finally reach out, is there, is there, is there any grace given?
Sure, if somebody wants to bring a property back to life, then that's more money on the tax revenue. You know, that's some, you know, uh, properties there, more housing for the people. I don't want to take down something that somebody wants to bring back to life.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions, but make sure you keep it in-house.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for being here as usual, Director West. Thank you. Um, no, no questions or comments from me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you both for being here tonight. I really enjoyed hearing about, um, I always enjoy hearing about our in-house demolition team and just knowing that we're teaching people how to do things instead of always looking outside to get contracts, but keeping it in the city. So that was, it's always just great to hear. My only question was, and I know we kind of spoke about this a little bit in a, another meeting, what was about the ARPA funds, but we were speaking about how if we demo these properties, what is our plan for that empty lot, um, starting to talk about that just so that we don't just have all these empty lots that then the weeds are growing, the grass is growing. It's, even though that, um, property was blighted, um, and was a blight within the city, now the lot is also. But just trying to bring up and continue the beauty of our city. And, um, I know you all touched on it a little bit last time because you said you would talk to Director Hill and maybe you all would, would try to get something together on what steps could. on what steps could be for those lots when the buildings are taken down. So I was just wondering, did, were you all able to, um, communicate with her or come up with a plan? Is anything in the works?
So, it's hard with the current, um, zonings to be able to build something between two properties with the setbacks that, uh, are required now. So, uh, we do, somebody in IT, uh, new hire Andrea, I believe her name is, she's doing a map showing where the condemned properties are, where empty lots are, so that, uh, builders could look at that and maybe focus on, uh, what is available. But, when we take a property down, it's still the owner that's responsible for that lot.
Ah, okay.
Uh, we try to encourage even maybe the next-door neighbors to, they would have to buy it off the repository, if it is on the repository, to buy that lot and then be able to utilize that for themselves.
It, it, so, so abandoned houses, abandoned lots, even if they have someone on the title, it's like, I always say, it's like when you put a child in the system, you shouldn't put him in the system in the first place. Because once they're in that system, we end up with a lien against this vacant lot for eighty thousand or forty thousand dollars, which no one's gonna buy.
No, no.
But, but we're obligated to lien it right now, the way the law works. So, it, there's, there's some design flaws in the whole thing, which make developing this stuff very difficult.
You did mention that before.
And this is where we sort of reinvigorate the land bank and HRA to put them in more active roles of, of acquiring these properties. But that's a process. People have, that, have the right to sell their property to someone else, and people are doing it. There's, there, people are buying up totally junk properties in bulk, um, with no development plans. I think we're, we think they're just using them to finance other things. Like they're saying, I own this.
I own this, my estate, almost.
Yeah, but, um, so it, it, it's a, it's a systemic problem that, that I think every office in one way or another ends up dealing with. You know, that's the reality.
Yeah, it's a lot of systemic issues in our world today. So, oh, wait, um, go ahead, you go ahead first, um, Director West, and then, then I'll, um, go back to something I was gonna ask Mr. Grover.
Okay, Councilman Ross, that is a great question. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. That is what I call the black hole. And what I mean by that is, we have properties that we contract out to be taken care of all year long, but the demo lift, the demo properties that are being taken down that creates grass and rodents and all of that kinda stuff, is something that, uh, I'm going to continuously meet with the mayor about to come up with some kinda plan, because just finding the person that owns the property, which Neil stated that, that's what the law states that we do, is not enough. We have to do something, because the resident that live on this side, the resident that live on that side, still suffer. I dealt with an issue on Minnick Street, and residents came to me. We end up having some sanitation laborers cut the grass, but it's a, it's an issue that's gonna continue to plague us throughout our, throughout our city as long as we continue to tear these properties down and they become lots. We have to do some, we have to create something to make this happen for the residents that they don't suffer and say that that's all that we can do.
Thank you, Director West. That's so true. We, and that, your powerful answer, just, um, thank you. Uh, so then, my next question would be, the, uh, what we wanted to pass for new codes, updated codes, would that in some way assist with the open lots and the property owners? Could it?
It, it could in the, in the fact that it's got the graduated fines.
Okay.
Um, it, so, so.
It could help, it could be part of it.
Some of the very things that you're talking about, that result. I mean, right now, they're all able to duck service and they never have to pay a thing. I mean, that's, the design is trying to fix it.
Right.
So now it's looking them just like a parking ticket is in the eye, and there's a number on it, and they know it's gonna keep going up. And so, the hope is, we don't know. The hope is that that makes it more easier to enforce, and more people comply when they can see you're being enforced. They're, right? They just do. If, if, if there's no consequence to your, like, you're, you're neglecting a thing, then there's no consequence. So the more you do, that can show you're actually enforcing and have the ability to, you know, there was, there's no, it's no panacea, but it, it's more than we have right now.
Right. And I think that's how we can help as council, not just only try to help get some, uh, some type of programming together or plan together that we do something with the lots, but also say, and pass resolutions and bills that say, you're not gonna do this to our residents. So I guess that's our piece in it too. Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. President Bowers?
Thank you. Um, I just had two follow-up questions, I think. Of the estimated eighty properties that are at the level one, um, on the list, on the demolition list, do, I, I know you said you're targeting, like, uh, properties that are close to each other or multiple in one shot, but do you have any idea of how many you might be able to demolish of this critical eighty, uh, with the appropriation?
With the, it depends on whether it's in-house demo or, you know.
So then that leads me to my second question, related to the equipment that's needed to ensure that we have the capacity in-house to do this. Um, I'm assuming that appropriation would come from this funding too? Is that accurate? Or would this come from the general fund?
Just a piece of equipment.
Just one piece of equipment? But it would be paid for out of this funding? Is that your?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Those are my only questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Da- Davis, excuse me.
Thank you, Vice President Green. I don't have any questions right now. I think they've all been answered, so far. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, next, is there anyone to speak to the tree removal and pruning program?
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. And, um, I appreciate and I'm glad to hear that it's so much cooperation between the two departments.
We're always working, we work with every department, actually, the codes.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm Cody Legg.
Thank you, just introduce yourself, and then, uh, you can start with your presentation.
Yep. I'm Cody Legg, City Forester, if you're here, Harrisburg here. Um, simply put, uh, this money from ARPA will be used to strengthen our current.
If you could speak into the microphone a little bit more.
This money will be simply used to strengthen our current, um, low-income and senior programs regarding, uh, pruning and removal of shade trees.
Thank you. Um, I will just ask, um, our current program is a low-income senior program, if I'm correct?
It's two, two, two separate programs.
So we have a low-income program and a senior program?
That's correct.
All right. Um, and this tree removal and pruning program would just stick to those exact same guidelines? Like, it wouldn't help someone who's just over low income, but also not a senior, that might need assistance? Are we just sticking to those same guidelines?
As, as far as I know, yes.
So, if, if, there, there's a, there's a parallel track coming on this, which is a much bigger grant, that's two million dollars, from the US Forestry Service, which is gonna, I, I think, jumpstart the department in what they're doing. So I think when they're saying, this is to sort of supplement the programs they have, you're gonna be able to use that money for a whole lot more. They, they, they gave us two grants, each a million piece, and then combined them, uh, you know, and they're, and, uh, you know, the department is still working through the details on how to get that going. Um, and there's communications with Rebecca and the granting agency. We've never had a grant from that agency like this before. Um, but, but, but two million dollars towards cleaning up trees is gonna be very significant.
And that's over five years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, and then how many trees do we look to be able to, residents, do we look to be able to assist with the five hundred thousand dollars, um, that's allocated right now?
So, last year, we, between the bo, both programs, we pr, either pruned or removed close to eighty trees. Um, and that, actually, that money ran out short of the year. Uh, that, I think, ran out in August, I believe. Um, so if you just extrapolate that to, just say, a hundred, a hundred years, I mean, a hundred tree, a hundred residents, um, per year, um, I think that's a good goal for, for two years, to, to at least two hundred residents. But that does depend on whether or not these low-income or senior, um, residents, um, qualify and, and actually speak up for their, for their trees, 'cause it's a similar situation that Ann has with her permitting system. Um, you know, permits will come in, um, and they just have to qualify for it. So it's really up to the, the residents to prove that they can, we can use a lot, utilize the money for, um, for them.
All right. Thank you. Um, so I guess it gets to my, my other point of, how are we gonna do community outreach to let people know these funds are available, that these programs are here, that they may qualify?
So, that is a, a portion of the grant that Neil spoke about. Um, there is actually a replacement, uh, position that we still have budgeted for, a, a part-time position, which is my predecessor, Ellen Roan. Um, so we're trying to fill that position as soon as possible, and that does depend on, um, the outcome of that grant.
And we can also put in trash bills.
Okay. All right. I was gonna say, what, what happens until then? If, if we're waiting on that grant before we do anything, then we might as well wait for that grant before we put any money out, right? Um, when there are lots of ways that we can reach out. We can put it in the trash bill, we can put it on the city webpage, we can do door-to-door, while you're out checking trees on the streets, you can be putting flyers out, um, so that people know what's going on and the programs that are available. I think that, uh, as a city, it's our responsibility to make sure that our residents know what we have to offer, um, and kinda educate them on, on some of the programs that we have available. Uh, I think that's the only questions I have at the moment. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues, starting to my right this time, with Councilwoman Daniels.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you for being here this evening. What companies will be cutting down the trees? Or is it an in-house project or?
So, for the low-income and senior programs, they are contracted out. So we need, do need to get bids for them, so it is the, the lowest bidder. Um, so there's, there's a handful of, of companies that do, do the work. Um, but, but yeah, that, that's generally how it works right now.
Okay. So, it doesn't make sense to ask what the average cost is, because that's probably gonna depend on the company who's doing the.
It, it, and the work, yeah.
Right.
It, it varies quite a bit between removals and light pruning or, or heavy pruning, so it's pretty hard to really just give one, one straight number.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. President Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Um, no questions. I was just gonna say, um, and you probably already do this for communicating about the program, is maybe when you go look at a tree and, um, deem it that it needs to str, it's not structurally safe, it needs to come down, or it needs pruning. I'm guessing you also let the resident know, hey, we have this program, you should apply, um, if you think you need assistance.
Right. So it, that's all explained on the permit they receive. Um, so, as long as they read it, uh, that, that those instructions are there for them to prove that they qualify for, for either of those programs.
Okay. And is it, it comes in different languages?
The permit itself?
Yeah.
Um.
That they, you're saying that they would read us when a?
It's, it's all in one, one permit, yeah. So it's, there's two separate, um, sentences, basically. Um, to direct them to the, the website to see if they qualify.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's it for me.
Uh, Councilman Rodriguez?
Um, no, I'm actually very familiar with the process. Your, your team has really, uh, already assisted me with residents removing a few trees already, so I look forward to this initiative and any help, um, we could offer. We're here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Um, only question I have is, how do you, are you able to tell the difference between, um, some of these trees that may have power lines and it, and maybe PPL's responsibility or something? How, how do you determine it?
So, yeah, PPL does get involved quite a bit. Uh, I have a working relationship right now with the forester at PPL, but generally speaking, they are just solely responsible for the space around their lines. Uh, so really, they just do, do trin, trimmings and.
It does save them a cost still, a little bit? They do a little bit of pruning, right?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, they, they actually generate more work for us, because they, they don't, um, prune trees to standard.
Got you.
So it's, sometimes they generate more of a hazard, um, which then leaves the, the resident, um, responsible. But, there's, there's a lot of, uh, details I think we gotta work through, um, especially with PPL and, and what they do for, for the lines.
And to be clear, though, this, this money is gonna be used, even the grant money, this is gonna be used to help the resident pay for this?
Right. That's correct.
Got you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Davis had another question.
Yes. Thank you, Vice President Green. So I'm concerned about a particular a, a street and area. It is at Fifteenth and Liberty. And my question is, do you have a set of priority trees or any trees that you're looking at specifically to take down first?
So, with the senior and low-income, it's a, basically a first-come, first-served basis. Um, and that's gonna rely heavily on the trees that I would inspect, and then, as long as those residents are qualifying for, um, the low-income or senior, we'll, we'll do it right away.
Okay.
But the, the grant is more focused on proactive removals or prunings, and that's kind of a different conversation.
But if you email us, um, a location, we'll look at it right away.
Okay. There is a, a tree on Fifteenth and Liberty that just fell. I guess the trees are so old there, and, and they're all the same trees. They, they've all been planted around the same time, and one just fell, well, not long ago, some months ago, and it fell on a house and pretty much, you know, damaged the house. But it could have easily fallen another, in another direction on, you know, over the street or on a car that's driving down the street. And so I've been concerned about those trees, because again, they've all been planted at the same time, and, um, so.
We'll take a look at it this week, and I'll send you an update.
Thank you.
No further questions. Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for being here. I don't have any, any other questions on this myself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I believe this covers all of the sections put forth in Resolution Seventeen. Uh, I'm going to recommend that this resolution be moved to our next legislative agenda. Um, I will ask that, before next week, we get a list of potential committee members for, um, these project committees, uh, that were spoken about, um, by the Building and Housing Director. Uh, I will also say I will most likely be offering an amendment to remove the pool maintenance and repair line, uh, until we get more clarification from the administration. And I believe this concludes the business for the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Bless you too, whoever that was.
God bless whoever sneezed. Uh, the final committee business we have this evening lies with the Building and Housing Committee. I would defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Chair Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. Building and Housing Committee, um, is going to discuss Bill Two dash two thousand twenty-four, and I believe we have our Deputy Code Administrator here to, and our Director, Director Montgomery, to present for us tonight. And you may speak whenever you're ready.
Deputy Code Administrator Bruce Henry. And, good evening, Council.
Deputy Code Administrator Bruce Henry, and good evening, council.
Good evening.
You all received a highlighted, so I'm gonna go over that with the slide program. You had the original one, you don't have the other one? Okay, so the property maintenance ordinance applies to not only the residential but commercial properties. So looking at the changes here in the administration portion, Chapter One, we've added owner's agent as a person's responsible for complying with it, so that can be the person that represents the owner or property manager for rental properties. We've added email to it as a means of notification if they don't elect to opt out, and the other language that's changed here is the placards and notices posted by codes officers prohibiting, tampering, or removing them. The former code just said where this code applies, now it specifically says includes the placard. And we didn't have instances where we'd post a placard and a half hour later it's gone, so gives us a little backup there for that. Authority to disconnect utilities, that's for condemned buildings that are blighted, it takes away a source of ignition for a fire to start. It's, you know, blighted properties that are condemned are a public safety issue of fire risk, and it also gives us authority during an emergency. However, most of the time, fire department's going to be there, and they would have that authority to disconnect utilities. The stop-work order language is updated, it coincides with the building code when they fail to comply with getting the building permits that's required. There's several definitions that were updated. One that, okay, inoperable vehicle, that's a vehicle that's not in running order, it's not registered, not inspected. Sleeping unit, that is like an efficiency apartment where there's an area for sleeping, but it's not a defined bedroom. Handrails and guide rails, that coincides with the building code. So if you have a walking surface that's 30 inches or more above another walking surface, you have to have a handrail and guide rail. Safety issues, you know, fall off. Non, yeah, where we got here? And neglect, it's a lack of proper maintenance to a building or structure. Going on to the next slide, door and window security, that's been updated from the previous, and also coincides with the building code, so if you install new windows, they have to have the little latches that you can pull out, so the window only opens four inches, so that a small child doesn't fall out a window. And the previous language talked about locking mechanisms in general, and now it's specific to a certain type of lock for rental properties. Overcrowding's been updated to include a minimum size for the dining and living room as the number of occupants increase, where before it was just for the bedrooms. And plumbing gets rid of, oh, inoperable refrigerators, that's a public safety thing, gotta remove the door off of them if you're gonna sit them out for trash to pick them up. If you don't, and the door goes shut and there's a child in there, the rubber seal will make us seal so, to the point that they can't push a door open, they'll suffocate and die. So they put that in the code. We go to Chapter Five, Plumbing Fixtures, some of them are specific to commercial buildings, drinking fountains, and grease interceptor maintenance. For the residential side, it's the lowered hot water temperature to prevent scald burns, and they also have a rainwater containment code in there, and that's for, if you're catching rainwater, to reuse so that it's properly contained, that it's not still water there, that mosquitoes will have a breeding ground for West Nile virus. And under the Electrical and Mechanical Chapter, the unvented portable heating sources, they're prohibited. If they malfunction, they can put off carbon dioxide, which we all know is a colorless, odorless gas that the body will absorb twice as fast as oxygen, so that's a public safety And also for the electrical safety, you know, outlets having covers so you don't get, go to plug something and you don't get shocked. Same with lighting over a pool, so it has safety there, they're on a proper circuit breaker. The prohibition of use of extension cords as permanent wiring, that matches the electrical code, you should never use an extension cord as permanent wiring, because it may not be the correct size with the correct insulation, so. And the fire safety portion matches the building code for carbon dioxide detectors, smoke detectors, so they've increased them from just one on each level to one on each level, and every bedroom for smoke detectors, and at least two carbon dioxide detectors in the home, one would be in the area of sleeping, one would be in the area of the fossil fuel appliance. So when does that apply? That applies when someone upgrades their home, they do a complete renovation, so we've recently had one of the rental companies that has a couple hundred rental properties, they did nine properties last year, they updated them, so now all their, those nine properties, not only do they have one smoke detector where they're in each level, but they also have them in each bedroom and have the appropriate carbon dioxide detectors, so once they've upgraded to code, now they're responsible by this code to maintain it that And the last section is citations and fines. Citations and fines always go through the Magisterial District Justice Office. We have immediate citations, and they've been in the ordinance since 1997, and those are for the people that have established themselves as habitual offenders of the same offense. I'd like, I have to send somebody a notice every month to cut their grass or to pick up their trash, so that's, so they're blatantly neglecting what they need to do, and that's what they are for. We asked to have abandoned vehicles added to that, because that's become a very large The dumping and recycling portion, misuse, we have a Public Works sanitation officer, we work very closely with Public Works, so that is in there for him to be able to hold people accountable, he's the guy that has to go out in that pile of trash and root through it and try to find any evidence of who may have left it there, so it gives him some enforcement power. And the last section there on the increasing fines per same offense, that is, so we have consistency, and consistency between all five district justices, because it takes them time to look up what they fined them the last time, so if we have it in the ordinance, it says it starts this, you do it a second time or a third time, this is what the fines are, so it's easier on their end. And we're hoping it's an incentive for compliance, we'd rather see them put the money into the property and fix the property than have to pay a fine, but most of our fines do go to property owners out of the city limits. So that pretty much concludes, you have anything you want to add? Neil?
No, some of this will take a little bit of adjustment once adopted, in terms of implementing the fine things in particular, it's just gonna be a change in the way some of the business is done, so it can't happen instantly, that's just not possible.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something, Director Montgomery, on this code or bill?
No.
Or you?
No, that's...
Okay, thank you.
That covers everything, yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for providing the highlights of the changes that council asked for at our last work session. I know that the approval of this bill would give the codes department the direct authority to set up electronic notices and email addresses would come from registries. I have a question about Chapter Seven, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues. The fire safety requirements, the first bullet where it says fire-resistant rated assemblies, first of all, we're talking about existing properties, correct? Okay, because the new buildings, they're pretty much up to code, okay? The fire-resistant rated assemblies, do these older properties have these fire-resistant assemblies, or is there a potential for it to cost someone an exuberant amount of money to bring their building up to...
When they renovate a building, if they have a party wall with another building, the area between the ceiling and the roof line is usually left open on these older homes or balloon frame construction. So what we have them do is put fire blocking in, which is two sheets of five-eighths-inch fire-rated drywall with fire caulk on the first layer, and then we put that in, so it keeps fire from spreading down a row of houses, so that's a fire-rated assembly in one aspect. Another one is if they had the whole place gutted, and then they'd had, and they're doing both sides, that party wall could be a fire-rated assembly if they do that on both sides from foundation to the underside of the roof.
Okay, I was just concerned, curious, you know...
Yeah, it'd be when they do major renovations.
Okay, major renovations.
It's not something I have to do right now, it's when they go to do major renovations.
Okay. Okay, so I'll open this up for my colleagues, we've been discussing this bill for the last couple of weeks, does anyone, I'll start with my left, Councilman Jones, do you have any questions about the highlighted changes that were provided to us?
I don't, but I do have a few concerns from some residents that I will speak to you about personally.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
No, well, maybe just a slight one, and please, I'm so sorry if I missed it, I don't think I did, but the definitions for, the new definitions for like pest eliminations, is it, because it doesn't say on here what they are, but is it anything saying if the owner is responsible or the occupant? A few residents lately have had problems with bedbugs or rodents, and they're told that it's their responsibility to remove it, but I do see there's an exception where the infections are caused by defects in the structure, the owner should be responsible for pest elimination.
The definition of pest elimination, pest elimination is control and elimination of insects, rodents, or other pests caused by eliminate, or other pests by eliminating their harborage places, by removing or making inaccessible materials that serve as their food or water, or by other approved pest elimination methods.
And that's what we'll go in.
That's what we'll...
But it won't say who's responsible for the, from eliminating them? Because in the book, it has just a few, so I was wondering, is that gonna be in R-wording so it's clear on who's responsible for elimination?
That language didn't change, that should be the property owner.
Okay, even if it's...
Even if it's a rental.
Even if it's a rental, and even if it's bedbugs? Because some property owners right now are saying to residents, we don't eliminate bedbugs, we only eliminate rodents, but I thought it was both, it's pest control.
Yeah, it's under, bedbugs is a pest.
That's what I said, okay, so I'll get back with that resident then. Thank you so much, I appreciate clarifying that question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. President Bowers, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you for being here tonight, but I don't have any questions for you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much again for being here and for supplying us with the highlighted changes to the new IPMC. Last, our last work session, our council had several questions, and some of those questions were asking for a highlighted list, Vice President Green, and asks for the list, Councilman Jones asked if codes will have a direct authority to find without going through the district justices?
No.
No, okay, right. Councilwoman Daniels asks, what is the legal foundation for the opt-out notice, and asks if the codes department has looked into working with other departments to create cohesiveness in solving problems, and Mr. Grover answered her questions. So I don't have any questions, I'm pretty comfortable with the changes, because I know that they're going to make the structures safer for the citizens, the citizens are going to be safer, so I'm comfortable with what changes and the updates that the IPMC, the new IPMC is going to have. Okay, so I don't have any further questions, this is the end of my report under the Housing and Building and Housing Committee, specifically the Codes Department, and I would recommend that Bill Two-Dash-Two Thousand Twenty Four would be passed by my colleagues, so thank you.
Is your recommendation to add Bill Two of Two Thousand and Twenty Four to the next legislative session agenda for a vote?
Yes, President Bowers, I would like to submit that Bill Two-Dash-Two Thousand Twenty Four be added to the next legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, City Council, and again, I'd like to thank the Law Bureau for all the work they did in preparing this.
Thank you, and thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Grover.
We will now move forward with public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. We do ask if you are here with a group, if you could please designate a spokesperson. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right, is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, can you hear me? Is this on?
No, I can't hear you.
Is it, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name's Bonnie Caro, Midtown Harrisburg. I am speaking in support of a ceasefire resolution that's expected to be introduced at the next session. To reiterate the severity of the situation in Gaza, I wanted to read a portion of an article that was written by Palestinian writer and activist Susan Al-Buhala. History will record that Israel committed a Holocaust written on March 6, 2024. It's 8:00 PM in Gaza, Palestine, right now, the end of my fourth day in Rafa, and the first moment I've had to sit in a quiet place to reflect. I've tried to take notes, photos, mental images, but this moment is too big for my notepad or for my struggling memory. Nothing prepared me for what I would witness. Before I made it across the Rafa-Egypt border, I read every bit of news coming out of Gaza or about Gaza. I did not look away from any video or image posted from the ground, no matter how gruesome, shocking, or traumatizing. I kept in touch with friends who reported on their situations in the north, middle, and south of Gaza, each area suffering in... and south of Gaza, each area suffering in different ways. I stayed current on the latest statistics, the latest political, military, and economic maneuverings of Israel and the US and the rest of the world. I thought I understood the situation on the ground, but I didn't. Nothing could truly prepare you for this dystopia. What reaches the, the rest of the world is only a fraction of what I've seen so far, what is only a fraction of this horror's totality. Gaza is hell. It is an inferno teeming with the innocents gasping for air, but even the air here is scorched. Every breath scratches and sticks to the throat and the lungs. What was once a vibrant, colorful, full of beauty, potential, and hope against all odds is draped in a gray colored misery and grime, barely any trees. Journalists and politicians call it a war. The informed and honest call it a genocide. What I see is a Holocaust, the incomprehensible culmination of seventy-five years of Israeli impunity for persistent war crimes. Rafa is the southernmost part of Gaza where Israel crammed 1.4 million people into a space the size of London's Heathrow Airport. Water, food, electricity, fuel, and supplies are scarce. Children are without school. Their classrooms have been turned into makeshift shelters for tens of thousands of families. Nearly every inch of previously empty space is now occupied by a flimsy tent sheltering a family. There are barely any trees left as people have been forced to cut them down for firewood. I didn't register the absence of greenery until I happened upon a red bougainvillea. Its flowers were dusty and alone in a deflowered world, but still alive. The incongruity struck me and I stopped the car to photograph it. Now I look for greenery and flowers everywhere I go. So far, in the southern and middle areas, though the middle increasingly became more difficult to enter, there are, but there are only patches, small patches of grass here, here and there, and an occasional tree waiting to be burned to bake bread for a family subsisting on UN rations of canned beans, canned meat, and canned cheese. A proud people with, with, with rich culinary tradition and habits of fresh food have been reduced and accustomed to a handful of paste and mush that have been sitting on shelves for so long that all you can taste is the metallic rancidity of the cans. It's worse, worse in the north. My friend Ahmad, not his real name, is one of a handful of people who have internet. It's sporadic and weak, but we can still message each other. He sent me a photo of himself that looked to me like a shadow of the young man I once knew. He lost over twenty-five kilograms. First, people resorted to eating horse and donkey feed, but that's gone. Now they're eating the donkeys and the horses. Some people are eating stray cats and dogs, which are themselves starving and sometimes feeding on human remains that litter streets where Israeli snipers picked off people who dared to venture within the sight of their scopes. The old and weak have already died of hunger and thirst. Flour is scarce and more valuable than gold. I heard a story about a man in the north who managed to get his hands on a bag of flour, a bag of flour recently, normally costing eight dollars, and was offered jewelry, electronics, and cash worth two thousand five hundred dollars for it. He refused. Was that, was that the timer for me?
Yeah, thank you.
It was.
Yeah.
Bonnie, can you please state your last name just for the meeting record, please?
Oh, yes, Carrow. Do you need me to spell it, or?
Uh, sure, if you want to.
C-A-R-R-O-W, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right?
Good evening, uh, thank you. My name is Emre Skaup and I am a Harrisburg property owner and lifelong resident of the city. I will be continuing the same reading as Bonnie in support of the ceasefire movement, of the ceasefire resolution that we expect to be pushed forward next week. It's hard to breathe. I hired a driver to deliver seven heavy suitcases of supplies to Nazaret, which he ferried down a few flights of stairs. He told me that carrying those bags made him feel human again. Because it was the first time in four months that he had been up and downstairs. It reminded him of living in a home instead of the tent which he now resides. It's hard to breathe here, literally and metaphorically. An immovable haze of dust, decay, and desperation coat the air. The destruction is so massive and persistent that the fine particles of pulverized life don't have time to settle. The lack of petrol made people resort to filling their cars with ste, ste rate, used cooking oil that burns dirty. It emits a peculiar foul smell and film that sticks to the air, the hair, clothes, throat, and lungs. It took me a while to figure out the source of that pervasive odor, but it's easy to discern others. The scarcity of running or clean water degrades the best of us. Everyone does their best with themselves and their children, but at some point you stop caring. At some point, the indignity of filth is inescapable. At some point, you just wait for death, even as you also wait for a ceasefire. But people don't know what they will do after a ceasefire. They've seen pictures of their neighborhoods. When new images are posted from the northern region, people will gather to try to figure out which neighborhood it is, or whose house, whose house that mound of rubble used to be. Often, those videos comes from Israeli soldiers occupying or blowing up their homes. I've spoken to many survivors pulled from the rubble of their homes. They recount what happened to them with a deadpan countenance, as if it didn't happen to them, as if it was someone else's family buried alive, as if their own torn bodies belonged to others. Psychologists say it's a defense mechanism, a kind of numbing of the mind for the sake of survival. The reckoning will come later, if they survive. But how does one reckon with losing your entire family? Watching and smelling their bodies disintegrate around you in the rubble as you wait for rescue or death? How does one reckon with total erasure of your existence in the world? Your home, family, friends, health, whole neighborhood, and country? No photos of your family, wedding, children, parents left, even the graves of your loved ones and ancestors bulldozed. All this while the most powerful forces and voices vilify and blame you for your wretched fate. Genocide isn't just mass murder, it is a tensional erasure of histories, of memories, books, and culture. Erasure of potential inland, erasure of hope in and for a place. Erasure is the impetus for destroying homes, schools, places of worship, hospitals, libraries, cultural centers, recreational centers, and universities. Genocide is intentional dismantling of another's humanity. It is the reduction of a proud, educated, high-functioning ancient society into penniless objects of charity, forced to eat the unspeakable to survive, to live in filth and disease with nothing to hope for except an end to bombs and bullets raining on and through their bodies, their lives, their histories, and futures. No one can think or hope for what might come about after a ceasefire. The ceiling of their hope at this hour is for the bombing to stop. It is a minimal ask, a minimal recognition of Palestinian humanity. Despite Israel cutting power and internet, Palestinians have managed to livestream a picture of their own genocide to a world that allows it to continue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council Committee. My name is Dr. Nedder El Sublani. I'm a resident physician and I'm a current Harrisburg resident, Creekville, Tan Homes. So thank you again for giving us this opportunity to gather here and relay our voices to the, about the current humanitarian crisis in Gaza. So, so far, thirty-two thousand civilian Palestinians have been killed. More than seventy percent of them, seven zero, seventy percent of them are children and women. More than seven thousand people simply disappeared. Or in other, in other words, they are currently lying under the rubble. More than hundred thousands are injured, hundreds of doctors and nurses being killed, hundreds of hospitals, schools, universities being completely destroyed and deliberately, deliberately demolished. The rate of kill has exceeded to a two hundred fifty dead per day. And just to give you a simple comparison, the rate of average deaths per day in other major conflicts in the last two decades was ninety-six in Syria, twenty-three point eight in Afghanistan, less than fourteen civilians deaths per day in the current ongoing war in Ukraine. But again, in Gaza, we are, are at almost like two fifty dead per day. I mean, don't get me wrong, but it sounds like Putin has been way more kind and merciful than the current Prime Minister of Israel and his right radical government. By the end of my four minute talk, probably one of, or two kids have likely starved to death or are just like killed while standing in a line for food. The only one problem is that Israel continues to pursue its massive killing, defying humanitarian and international laws, using not only mass murdering weapons, but also hunger and famine just to do nothing other than protecting its radical government and satisfying its anger toward the tragedies which happened back on the seventh of October. Again, I say tragedies. They are committing what has been clearly and loudly, loudly described by International Court of Justice, United Nations, and major modern countries of the world as war crimes, as war crimes, and using US military, unfortunately, and taxpayers' money, which make us in one way or another complicit in undergoing possible genocide in twenty-first year. So when I moved to US a couple of years ago, I had the dream of having my kids born and grown, growing in a country which was founded on justice, dignity, and respect of humanity. I'm very hopeful that the city of Harrisburg and its community will stand up for those standards and fight for the most sacred cause, which is protecting human lives and to stop the killing by passing a resolution demanding an immediate ceasefire and urge US government to imply actual, actual plans to help rebuild Gaza and seriously push for long-term peace plans in Palestine. Thank you.
Good evening, President Chair and the rest of the Harrisburg Council. My name is Aisha Ahmed. I'm a physician in the community. I am not a resident of Harrisburg, I live in Hummels Town, but I have worked for many years for Harrisburg Hospital. I still provide services at PPI, Spring Creek, so, and my mosque is three miles uptown. So I'm very attached to this community. I'm here to speak on the ceasefire resolution. And I would like all of you, not just on the council, but everyone here, to imagine that the city of Harrisburg is under attack. Up to two percent of the population is killed. Five percent is injured. Nearly all Harrisburg residents are displaced and their homes are now rubble. There is famine because all entry of food and supplies has been withheld. Now, in addition, I want you to imagine that Harrisburg Hospital, Osteopathic Hospital, Poly Clinic, Hamilton Health, Capital Rehab, Spring Creek Rehab, Homeland, and every single clinic in the city has been decimated. I want you to imagine that all schools have been destroyed. No journalist is allowed to enter this zone and all news from this area is vetted by the attacking country before being shown to the rest of the world. The journalists who do document these atrocities from the ground have been killed or injured. A Harrisburg child is killed every ten minutes. Imagine that. A Harrisburg mother is killed every thirty minutes. Imagine that. Ambulances are bombed while on rescue missions. This dystopian scenario is a reality for the people of Gaza. The numbers are now staggering, inhumane, and atrocious. Per UNRWA, the children killed in Gaza since October seventh exceed children killed in all conflicts since two thousand nineteen. As a healer, it is deeply disturbing to realize that the attacks on healthcare workers and healthcare facilities under the guise of targeting militants have resulted in no accountability for the state of Israel. There are so many nuances to this genocide. Scholastic genocide, institutional genocide, cultural genocide. But the one that hits the hardest for me personally is how this genocide will perpetuate as Palestinians who are sick, injured, or suffering from chronic illness will now have a high mortality because they have nowhere to go. They have nowhere to go. It is also appalling how many medics have been abducted. Just as of today, WHO Surveillance System for Attacks on Healthcare Facilities, there have been a, a total of eight hundred and four attacks on healthcare facilities and workers, six hundred and three deaths and nine seventy injuries. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Leila Yagno. I am not a resident of Harrisburg, but I am an employee of the School District of Harrisburg here. And I am a Palestinian American. I stand before you to stress the urgency of the need to pass a ceasefire resolution today. As we speak, over thirty-five thousand Palestinians are no longer on this earth. And this number does not include those that were not able to be reported. Gaza faces imminent famine and the United States continues to arm Israel using taxpayer money instead of using its influence to end the violence and stand on the side of human rights. People continue to suffer and die on our watch and on our dime. It must stop with us, with all of us. Not only has the United States now made a mockery of its own purported values, purported values, and isolated self on the world stage, but the ripple effects are felt here in Pennsylvania. The Commonwealth joins the nation in seeing an increase in Islamophobia, anti-Arab discrimination, and antisemitism. This is no longer a foreign policy issue. This is an issue that is directly affecting your constituents. Join us today in taking a stance in supporting an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Your role today is incredibly valuable. You are representing a community that is grieving, that is angry, and that is, that is quickly losing faith in our government institutions. Your obligation is the same as ours, to resist Islamophobia, anti-Arab discrimination, antisemitism, and to work towards fostering a community that serves us all. The city of Harrisburg was quick to voice its support for Israel and has yet to acknowledge a community grieving over tens of thousands dead. Does this mean that Israeli life is worth more than a Palestinian life in Harrisburg? This ceasefire resolution is an acknowledgement that we are facing a grave humanitarian crisis that has, that has taken too many lives. It is an acknowledgement that indiscriminate attacks kill children, women, men, infrastructure, and along with all of that, it kills any hope for justice and lasting peace. Our community is tired of asking to be seen. We carry the trauma of generations before us and we are exhausted. And even through our exhaustion, we fight to be heard and for the people of Gaza and the Palestinian people to be acknowledged. We will continue to do so, but no one can do this work alone. We must do this collectively because at the end, we must find a way to inhabit the world together and peacefully. It is imperative that a ceasefire resolution be passed to show that Harrisburg will not stand on the wrong side of history and will continue to support its diverse constituents in calling for a ceasefire and denouncing injustices both abroad and in our neighborhoods. As federal leadership waivers, our cities remain a voice for our values. You have seen this resolution. Everything that is written there echoes what I have said here today. There is nothing inflammatory about seeking an end to violence against Gazan children or denouncing, or denouncing systemic racism where it is found. Passing the resolution will put us in the company of over eighty cities that have passed resolutions of their own. Our research and due diligence have shown that none of these cities have faced legal action as a result of passing the resolution, nor are we aware that this resolution will violate any laws. In fact, the intent of this resolution in calling for a ceasefire and denouncing systemic racism and hate is consistent with the, is consistent with that of our country's Civil Rights Act, as well as our own Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, which was enacted for the protection of the public welfare, prosperity, health, and peace of the people of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Calling for a ceasefire would also align us with the number of human rights organizations, such as Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, Oxfam, and Doctors Without Borders. It would join the International Court of Justice in calling for a ceasefire. It would join the International Court of Justice in calling for cessation of hostilities. It is time to be the example and align ourselves on the side of human rights. Call for a ceasefire and pave the way for healing, justice, and peace. Thank you so much.
Hello. Hi, everybody. My name is Monique Pyle, and I'm a registered nurse who lives in uptown Harrisburg. I'm here today to urge you, the Harrisburg City Council members, to pass an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution for Gaza and for all Palestinians. Healthcare is really hard. It is physically, mentally, and emotionally draining. We are expected to carry the weight of bearing witness to suffering, loss, and trauma daily, often without adequate preparation or support. Choosing a career in healthcare means choosing a career that causes increased mental health issues, including thoughts of suicide. Being a healthcare worker in America, in a small town like Harrisburg, is difficult. For healthcare workers in Gaza, they find themselves doing their already incredibly difficult job while simultaneously caring for victims of cruel, senseless violence. They are also working under the most extreme and intense conditions: no resources, unsafe hours, and the risk of being killed. To be placed in a situation where you have to evacuate your hospital because the Israeli military is invading and bombing said hospital, forced to evacuate and leave babies to die, to witness and experience this kind of violence and suffering is a burden few can fully comprehend. Since October seventh, 2023, this genocide has killed nearly six hundred healthcare workers, as well as thirty thousand civilians, more than two-thirds of whom are women and children. Seventy thousand others have been injured, and at least one point seven million Palestinians have been displaced. And that's not including the recent bombing of the hospital and the recent, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the siege, yeah. Six hundred healthcare workers have been killed trying to help, trying to save lives, trying to save those who should have never even been in this situation to begin with. They risked their lives. And so, what we are asking for is the bare minimum. We're asking you to help save Palestinians who are being ruthlessly targeted and killed. We're asking you to show your support for the healthcare workers who had the courage to risk their lives, and we're asking you to show your support for all Palestinians. We're asking for a ceasefire now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? We go, I'm not finished on this side yet. Is there anybody else on my right that would like to offer a public comment?
My name is Toby. I'm, I'm at the PennDOT encampment. Just gonna change the subject really, really quickly, and I'll get out of here. Okay. I wish the city of Harrisburg cared about housing the homeless as much as that one guy who was sitting right here cares about the expensive water park. I, I listened to what Denise Hill said and planned, and honestly, in terms of actually helping the homeless people in that encampment or along the riverfront, there was a whole lot of nothing that was said or planned to do that. She, she used basically three seconds to say that the city has absolutely no plan for the homeless people that they are evicting out of the last homeless camp in Harrisburg. I highly recommend the city comes up with a plan that works for the city and the homeless people that will be affected by the I-83 bridge expansion. Because if there isn't a plan, or if the plan is a whole bunch of nonsense, like the last closing of homeless camps, homeless camps war, then the homeless people will have no choice but to come into the city and sleep or camp on sidewalks and along the riverfront. I suggest a council, council of some sorts be put together consisting of a equal number of people from the city, local nonprofits, and homeless people before the city evicts the homeless camp near I-83 without any plan whatsoever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Valmar Smith. I live in the Allison Hill Summit Terrace neighborhood, okay? I choose to go there to help bring the neighborhood alive, okay? And what happened is I was joined with Mr. Wise, David Wise, you remember him? And what happened was, he brought me along beside him, and he taught me a lot. And what I'm asking the Council members is to look into your heart, okay? Because he passed away, but the legacy he left was great because we came a long ways in that neighborhood. It's called the Summit Terrace Neighborhood Associate. And we have an empty lot over there, was supposed to be his, and his name, and honoring his name. And somehow, we, they slipped away from that, and no one is doing anything about this. But he was a good man. He did a lot for that neighborhood, and he did a lot for the peoples that's in that neighborhood. And I'm just asking, mine's is not gonna be long, I'm asking if you could look into your heart to help me fix this situation because we have the lot. They're turning it into some kind of dog lot, and it's really hurting to me to know that his name is not there, but it is a lot of weeds and bushes and dogs are there. That's not how we honor peoples who have done a lot for the city. And so, basically, I'm just asking if there's anything, any grants that we can do to get him a plaque or to honor that in his name of all the work that he's done in that, in that neighborhood. And that's basically all, and I thank you for just listening to me and know that you guys are in my prayers, okay? All the way. I pray for that Gaza city, and I pray for the peoples that's there and all the things that's going on. God is gonna see them through that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Brian Kiesling, Midtown. So, I know it's late. My, my comments to you tonight are coming from balancing my respect for all of you as individuals with the need for me to speak on behalf of a community that has entrusted me to try and push our public officials to take action. Those two positions, I think they're not in conflict. I have an appreciation for what I know you all believe, but at the same time, we need to have a recognition of the fact that time is of the essence, that this is a matter of life and death, and that these are dire issues that need to be addressed. And unfortunately, the problem extends to Harrisburg as a city. We all know that to be neutral in the face of oppression is to side with the oppressor, and that's true. But unfortunately, as we meet here tonight, the city of Harrisburg can't even claim to be neutral. On November twelfth, 2023, the official Facebook page for the city of Harrisburg posted, and I quote, "The city of Harrisburg stands firmly with Israel." Now, at the time the city made that statement, Israel had already murdered over eleven thousand innocent Palestinians, genocide scholars, Holocaust experts, and much of the international community were already describing Israel's crimes as, quote, "A classic case of genocide." That Facebook post is still up. So, as of November twelfth and continuing right up to this very moment, the city of Harrisburg does not side with the oppressor via neutrality. Instead, the city of Harrisburg shamefully sides with the oppressor by way of a proud, explicit, public endorsement. Unfortunately, that means that you as our city council have an even greater responsibility to right this wrong. Now, I don't believe for one second that any of you, as individuals, support that. I know you don't. But the unfortunate fact of the matter is that the city that this body represents does currently endorse it because of that post. And fairly or unfairly, it means that it's on you to undo it, and we're here to help you undo it. It's how you undo the harm that this city has caused to the people who live here, passing this ceasefire resolution. The community feels betrayed and angry. We feel betrayed by the White House. We feel betrayed by our senators and representatives. We feel betrayed by our governor, and we do not want to feel betrayed by our city. And I know that you do not want to betray us. But there are people in this community who have lost dozens of family members, and their grief is our grief, and the current position of the city of Harrisburg is that the city endorses the cause of that grief. So, let's talk about what's practical. In the last two weeks alone, at least fifteen new ceasefire resolutions have passed in the United States. The time to act is now. In fact, it has been time to act. As you know, as council, it's your duty to hear the residents whom you were elected to serve and enforce their will by bringing this resolution forward, and we believe that it should be brought forward next week on March twenty-sixth. That date was first brought up weeks ago, and it is the timeframe that our community feels is more than reasonable given the dire urgency of the issue. We know there's a process, and we've gone through the process. A little quicker than some other resolutions maybe. We know government famously, famously takes time, and that's not your fault, but this is an emergency. And the city has had time. We know Solicitor Grover is still reviewing our resolution. Other legal experts have looked at it. They expressed no concern over the language, saw no real risk of liability for the city in passing it. In fact, of the eighty-something resolutions like ours that have been passed since way back in October, there hasn't been one lawsuit, not one. That includes cities in Pennsylvania, cities which passed resolutions with no negative consequences from either the public or the state. The fact of the matter is, it's one thing to take a risk to do the right thing, but in this case, you can do the right thing and be safe doing it. The people obviously are ready for it. We'll stand with you and support you when this passes. We've been coming to city council meetings. We're engaged. This weekend, we also decided to try to collect some petition signatures in support of the council immediately passing the resolution. We put in about four hours of work, and that's not much, but in those four hours, we got three hundred and ninety-two signatures. That is a petition rate that politicians would kill for on their campaigns.
Thank you for your comment.
It's not just right. It's not just safe. It's popular. I, I know time is up, so I just want to leave you with a call to action, a really simple call to action. First, Solicitor Grover, we implore you to finish your review this week. We believe that this is ready to go. It has been long enough. President Bowers, with all the respect in the world, and I mean that genuinely, I really appreciate our communications throughout this, we believe that Tuesday is the time to bring this forward and put it on the agenda. And for the rest of you, the community just wants to hear words of public support for the resolution. They want to know that you support it. Because I know you do. I know where your hearts are on this, but the community wants to hear it too. So, thank you very much.
Let me make sure no one else has any public comment, and then we can. Is there any other public comment to my left? Anyone else that would like to offer a public comment? Okay. Councilman Jones.
So, we thank you. I'm gonna speak. We, we thank you guys for coming down and having the passion. We, we have sympathy for what's going on in Gaza, all of the things that are happening. But I have to say this, I support a resolution for a ceasefire, right? But I don't feel like being pressured is a way to do this. Everything that you're saying is happening. Again, I'm sorry for it, but to try to force us to make a decision, I don't think it's fair. I really, I, I understand that. I understand that, but if you don't know how this process works, you have to give us an opportunity. We've spoken with you. We've shown you that we support you. So, give us an opportunity to bring this forth. That's all I'm asking. That's it.
Thank you. Council members, the time is eight thirty-six PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.